To understand who you might be promoting, and then we're just going to do a quick, if you don't mind, kind of a pinning ceremony.
Perfect.
So Dan Phillips, you want to come up here first? I'm going to sit so I can... Where do you go?
He's coming.
Taking care of family business.
Family first.
I was afraid he had you by the nape of the neck there for a minute.
So this is Dan Phillips. Dan has been a member of our department since 2017. He has proven himself a quality police officer and has done a phenomenal job as a member of the District Attorney's Office Anti-Crime Task Force, and he performed admirably during his time as Acting Sergeant. Dan is actually currently an Acting Sergeant. I think most importantly, about the most important thing you need to know about Dan is that he's a great person. Dan truly cares about the people that he works with and the people that he serves. He is knowledgeable, motivated, and has shown interest in altering the culture of our agency to impact our officers more positively, enhance their careers, better their family dynamic, and improve our agency's relationship with the community. He will be taking on a leadership role in peer bystander intervention, which has been identified as a law enforcement best practice when it comes to our duty to intervene. He's probably going to get sent on a call right now. For all these reasons, I would like to recommend Officer Daniel Phillips for promotion to Sergeant. If the Board agrees, your motion would be to promote Daniel Phillips to Sergeant effective immediately in rank and on payroll.
I'll make that motion to accept Daniel Phillips as Sergeant and immediately pay him what he's supposed to be paid.
I gave you the motion.
Just so moved.
So moved, I know, but I'm not supposed to do that anymore. I would like to.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Joyce, second by Molly. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Congratulations, Dan.
Don't stick 'em.
Gets different letters on his shirt.
There we go. That's a proud son. Come on up here and shake our hands, buddy.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
Seated before you is Thomas Douglas. Tom has been with our agency since 2018. He has shown interest in multiple areas of law enforcement, but truly impressed our management staff at his performance during his time as an Acting Sergeant. He showed the ability to motivate his officers, he shows compassion and empathy with our public, and he has the respect of the entire department. Tom is a very quiet person until you get to know him. In fact, I was unaware that he even spoke for the first year that he worked. However, once he's comfortable around you, he will show his true colors as the department caught up. He combines professionalism with humor to lower tensions and put people at ease, both inside and outside the agency, and we trust his judgment to supervise effectively. For all these reasons, I would like to recommend Officer Thomas Douglas for promotion to Sergeant. If the Board agrees, your motion would be to promote Thomas Douglas to Sergeant effective immediately in rank, but effective October 15th on payroll.
I'll make that motion to accept Thomas Douglas as Sergeant and effective immediately. Welcome, and October 15th.
On payroll, correct. Second.
Second by Randy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Tom will be having his wife pin him.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Seated before you is Ryland Baronis. Ryland has been with our agency since 2018 as well. You will not find a single community event that he is not the first person to volunteer for. He loves working with people and clearly has a passion for helping others. He showed his leadership abilities long before we chose him in the Acting Sergeant role. In fact, some of the officers who worked with him took to calling him Sarge long before he even applied for the position. He is motivated, smart, and caring. He has shown interest in being involved in several different aspects of policing, and in fact, we will likely have to order him to reduce his activity in other areas to ensure that he can serve appropriately in this role. He is well-liked, respected, and we trust his judgment to supervise effectively. For these reasons, I would like to recommend Officer Ryland Baronis for promotion to Sergeant. If the Board agrees, your motion would be to promote Ryland Baronis to Sergeant effective immediately in rank, but effective October 15th on payroll.
So moved, Ryland Baronis. Welcome as a Sergeant, and October 15th will be the start date. Second?
Start date now.
No, start date immediately. Immediately, sorry about that.
Do I have a second?
Molly did.
Molly, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Unanimous.
Ryland's father is going to pin him. Well done.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ryan. Sergeant.
And we'll now move on to 5.4.
Yes.
Moving on to 5.4, Police Department. Chief Mason recommends the appointment of Jesse Green to Lieutenant.
Correct. Seated before you is Jesse Green. Jesse is currently Detective Sergeant. Jesse has been with our agency since 2010. He has served as our first-ever detective, then promoted to Detective Sergeant, and has been the supervisor in charge of investigations since 2018. Jesse is a rare find in many ways. He is one of those people who always brings calm and lowers tensions. He is kind, considerate, and always looks for the good in everything and everyone. If you say you hate something, he will find you five reasons as to why you may want to reconsider, and before he's done, you will likely have done so. We like to joke that if Jesse doesn't like you, you have some changes to make in yourself. He leads by example, and I actually think that moving from a road supervisor role to an administrative role is going to be the most difficult part of the transition for him. He loves responding to calls and will take on the workload and reports before assigning them to his officers. He has never and will never ask an officer to do anything that he isn't willing to do himself, and this is the mark of a true leader, I believe. There is not a person in our building who wouldn't defer to Jesse's judgment with a question or a problem. He will be a perfect combination of leadership, compassion, and empathy in this new role. For these reasons, I would like to recommend Detective Sergeant Jesse Green for promotion to Lieutenant. If the Board agrees, your motion would be to promote Jesse Green to Lieutenant effective immediately in rank, but effective November 12th on payroll, and that's only because his lieutenant's position is actually included in the budget request that has to be approved by town meeting, so that's the first pay period after town meeting.
Motion to accept Jesse Green as our next lieutenant. Thank you. To start immediately.
In rank and November 12th on payroll.
November 12th.
Second?
Second by Molly. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Jesse has chosen myself from the current lieutenant. Mitch is taller, he's got a pin later.
Does this mean when my car gets hit by a deer, he's not coming out?
It happens in the daytime, you know.
I'm sure he's not going to be behind the desk all the time. Thank you. Congratulations, Jesse. Well deserved.
So I have one more quick thing that I'd like to do that does not require assent by the Board, doesn't require a vote, it'll only take up another minute and a half of your time. I'd like to ask Mike Romano to come up here. Again, this doesn't require a vote or anything. No, it's a surprise, I couldn't even put it on the agenda, otherwise you wouldn't know. So seated before you is Sergeant Mike Romano. Mike is in charge of our day shift supervision. Mike was hired by the Town of Hadley as a special police officer in 2013. In June of 2014, he was promoted to part-time and then full-time in May of 2015. In November of 2018, he was promoted to Sergeant. Before coming to Hadley, Mike worked as a part-time police officer and worked as a security officer at the Vermont Genki Nuclear Power Plant. Mike is critical to our operations. He is a firearms and taser instructor. He's also in charge of our cruiser fleet, ensuring that our cars are cared for and maintained. He heads up our training program for new officers and has been instrumental in the implementation and operation of our School Resource Officer Program. Mike was also key to the implementation of our cruiser and body camera installation, and he also leads our crisis intervention team and our Marine Patrol Unit. Mike does a lot more for our department, but those things that we mentioned require a high level of attention and almost a perfectionist approach, which Mike has. Just look at his hair. If you see his uniform, his cruiser, and his desk, they are perfection. In 2020, the Hadley Police Department adopted the insignia of Staff Sergeant to signify the Senior Most Sergeant. With the promotion of Sergeant Green to Lieutenant, we thought it most appropriate to recognize Sergeant Romano's hard work and dedication here publicly and present him with the recognition of Staff Sergeant.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir, for being with us. Appreciate it. All deserved. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Sorry for taking up your entire room and raising the volume.
That's okay. Nice to see everybody come.
It's great.
And Chief, you're not so bad yourself either.
Do a good job.
You gonna come back tomorrow?
Thank you.
Calm, let it calm down for a minute.
Yeah. We're going to consent to public comments. Public comments. Maybe nobody will be chatty.
It's always helpful.
It is.
All right. Moving on to public comments, is there anyone here for public comments, or is there anyone on Zoom, which I can't see?
I can see Zoom. No one on Zoom.
Is anyone here for public comments?
Also, I need to remind everybody the meeting is being recorded.
This meeting is being recorded. I'm sorry I didn't say that earlier. All right, the consent agenda. Consent agenda tonight warrants AP 2313, AP 2312, AP 2313S, PR 2305, PR 2306. Hadley Police Department return to patrol status Patrol Officer Canine Handler Jacob Marini.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Second, and any comments from Chief Mason on Officer Marini?
Nope. Jake did a great job as an Acting Sergeant. We didn't have enough spots for all the promotions, and he's simply returning to patrol status.
All right, I have a motion. I, Randy, and a second by Joyce. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Passes.
I didn't realize what you...
All right, town fees analysis. We're going to discuss whether to have a subcommittee to review the town department fees. It's been discussed... Carolyn, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so are you waiting to do public comment?
There was nobody.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I apologize. Chief Mason was giving a contract. I missed who motioned and seconded the consent.
Randy.
My motion.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So the town department fees are sometimes questioned about whether they cover the costs of doing business, so to speak, and perhaps it's the time to review that and possibly compare with other area towns to see how we're doing, just sort of as a thing to keep us up to date.
Is that a request from Jessica, or is it just all fees included everywhere?
I'm not sure where that request came up, but I think it's been ongoing.
It's been ongoing.
The Board of Health just recently posted that they have increased theirs.
Here's a question. In the past, we've... I know the towns have tried to do this every few years, you know, and it's kind of changed in pockets, but I don't remember having a subcommittee do it. Typically, the department heads themselves were the ones who came forward with recommendations. So, I mean, fine with a subcommittee, I'm just wondering why a committee and not...
Did somebody specifically ask for it?
Obviously, somebody must have.
Well, I think it's just been a general discussion about...
It's been a concern of mine that our fees are not up to date, whether we ask our department heads to look at their fee structure and possibly compare it to neighbors, if you will, and then give us a report.
But that certainly can be done, just requesting the department heads.
And we can review it.
Yeah, I think each department has been in charge of that all along, so...
All right, well, let's just focus them on it.
Are they willing to do that? Do you think it's not going to put an excessive burden on them?
Well, that's the question.
They have in the past. I mean, there have been occasions where the department heads themselves came and said, "We just want you to know," like, you know, Northampton, Amherst, East Hampton seem to be charging a lot more than we are. At other times, it was a direction from the Select Board asking them to, and they did.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I deal with planning boards throughout the valley, and the fees are from here to here, so... And I know there's a lot of things that we deal with here that a lot of them have no fees, and so I think that everything ought to be looked at, not just where there's existing fees, but maybe where fees should be that aren't.
Okay, so...
I would suggest having a deadline.
All right, certainly not before town meeting.
Please don't. It might, you know, with their workload, I would certainly give them at least a month or month and a half.
Well, you certainly can't start fees in the middle of the year.
No, I think that's the...
We're in the discussion of fees.
Well, we can, but it will give them some time to do that, and I think, you know, after the first of the year, I think that would be before town meeting or before we get into budget-wise, is there something that we can do to change as the budget process goes on for annual town meeting, then maybe they can come to us with any requests for increases or not at that point.
Yeah, I think having it in advance of the budget being finalized would be critical, so, I mean, I would propose just an initial deadline of by December 31st.
That seems reasonable.
With the holidays and stuff, I would go for January.
Well, they can do it earlier. Well, then we could say December 15th, and then they don't have to worry about holidays. Do you think that's more reasonable, so people don't put it off and say, "I can get it done"?
If people are like most people, it'll be last minute, no matter what the deadline is, so...
I mean, I think the first of the year is fine to bring it forth, just in January.
All right, so by December 31st, so we can have it at the beginning of the year. All right, do we want a motion for that, please?
Make a motion to approve the department... Or motion to request the department heads analyze their own town fees, do a comparative analysis, and submit any recommendations for changes to the Select Board by December 31st.
Changes or additions?
Or additions, that's true too. Or deletions.
I'll second that. Second by Randy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. EverSource upcoming solar project. We have... Here.
I'm going to move my chair so I don't break my neck, so I can watch the proposal.
Are they putting something... Are you putting something up?
You're not putting anything on the...
Good evening, Madam Chair, and through you to the members. Thank you very much for allowing us to come before your Board. We do have a presentation that's printed, it's easier to have it on the print form. We're having difficulties getting it. Does that work for you?
That's fine.
Get your exercise in.
Is this the property on Bay Road?
This is our property at our Area Work Center on Russell Street, 55 Russell.
Russell going to the back of Bay Road.
So it's going to be right on in... This is Tracy Redman, our community solar program, community manager, community solar resiliency manager, who's going to be able to explain a little bit more of the project. My name is Mike Kane, I'm the Community Relations Representative for the area. Work closely with Carolyn and certainly met with the Chair and Select Member Randy at a community forum. So again, thank you for allowing us to come before you. Let me get this information in front of you. Subject matter expert will have everything you need to answer. Oh, thank you, Carolyn, thank you. But it's on our campus. And I don't believe we're going across the street on Bay.
Well, it's not across the street.
So behind, so the back of our property, the gate, not the... Not going farther across. I believe we have some other land over there. So again, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us come talk to you, and we wanted to share with you a proposal that we have. Let me just start by giving a little bit of context about solar and battery energy in Massachusetts. So I'm sure you're all aware, and I should mention, yeah, I'm the manager of the Community Solar Resilience Program at EverSource. So as I'm sure you're all aware, solar energy is growing quite a lot in Massachusetts, has grown substantially in the past decade. Currently, we have more than 100,000 customers who have solar, and we expect that number to grow quite a lot. Actually, by 2050, we expect that more than half of our customers will have solar. It's a really versatile type of technology. It can be, you know, built in solar panels on the ground or in rooftop applications or in parking canopies, so it can be really applied in a lot of different ways, and it has the benefit, of course, of producing clean energy, reducing fossil fuel emissions, and benefiting communities. So something we're really excited about, and we currently own 22 solar installations across the state, so it's a technology that we're familiar with. The other thing I wanted to share with you is about battery energy storage, and this is something that's becoming much more popular and widespread. When you pair batteries with solar, it allows the solar to be more versatile. It basically stores the energy from the solar panels and allows you to use that energy when it's needed most. So in the case that we'll be talking about, it would allow us to use the solar energy when there's the greatest demand on the grid, when it's needed most. So that's battery energy storage, and Massachusetts as a state has been a leader in deploying battery energy storage, so it's something that the state has really encouraged. And part of that is that last year Governor Baker signed into law new legislation that encourages and allows further development of solar energy paired with battery storage. And in particular, what this law does is it allows... It does many things, but one small part of it is it allows electric and gas distribution companies to own solar generation facilities paired with battery storage. So the way that this legislation talks about it is that the electric and gas distribution companies can work with municipalities to support their climate resilience goals and to build solar and storage projects on company-owned land. And there's also an encouragement to give priority to municipalities with environmental justice populations, as defined by the state. So we think this is really exciting legislation, it's something that we'd like to help implement, and when we heard about this, we thought about, okay, well, how can we do this? How can we build solar and storage on our properties? And so we started a review of our properties, and I'll come to your property, the one on our property in Hadley, just in a moment, but I do just want to mention some of the benefits of these types of projects. They can increase the commercial tax base, they can bring market revenues, so you sell the solar into the wholesale market, and those revenues can benefit the host community, they reduce fossil fuel emissions, they involve job creation and workforce development, and that's something that we would really like to promote in our program to encourage workforce development in the communities where the solar projects are located. They can also allow for electric vehicle charging of municipal vehicles, like Bleach Cruisers, if that's of interest. They certainly provide increased resiliency for emergency response activities by locating the solar at our facilities, it will provide backup power to those facilities that do provide emergency response during power outages, and it reduces the use of generators using the solar battery instead. So the particular project that we're talking about that we'd like to propose to you is the one at 55 Russell Street. We see the opportunity here for about two megawatts of parking canopy and rooftop and ground mount solar, so there's really the opportunity at this property potentially to build all three kinds of solar panels. That would produce about 2.9 gigawatt-hours of clean solar energy annually. Just to give you a rough gauge of how much energy that is, that's roughly equal to the consumption of 480 homes over the course of a year. We're not proposing to use it for homes, but just to give you a sense of the scale. We would include battery energy storage in this, and the basic concept is that during normal operations, when there's no power outages, what we would propose... normal operations, when there's no power outages, what we would propose to sell the solar energy that we would build on our site into the wholesale market and get revenues from that solar. It'd be wholesale market revenues, it would be renewable energy credits, or RECs, it would be clean peak energy certificates, and it would be forward capacity market revenue. So there's about four streams of revenues that would come from these solar projects during normal operations. And we'd like to share those revenues, basically give them to benefit Hadley and the environmental justice communities in Hadley, consistent with the legislation. When there's, when there are power outages, what we would propose is that we'd use the solar power to provide backup power to the area work center in Hadley. So basically, using it onsite there to support emergency response activities. So that's the basic concept of the project. And if you look at Slide 7 of what I passed out, it provides an aerial view of the project. This is just a conceptual layout, you know, certainly it could change based on feedback from you and from the planning board and from others, but it shows in red the areas proposed for solar or battery development. You can see that the 1.72 acres is the rooftop of the building itself, so we have solar there. There's some parking canopies to the south and to the east of that building, and then potential for ground mount to the east of that. So, the white line showing going north to south on that property is an easement, and we're not proposing solar over the easement, it's a sewer easement. So, if the Select Board supports this idea, and I'm here to, you know, answer questions and see what you think of it, but if you support the idea, then we would definitely need to follow up with the planning board and with the conservation commission to talk about the details. And what we're really asking for is a sense of, you know, whether you think this project, you know, is something you're interested in. If you do support the project, what we would ask for is a letter of support, just a brief letter. We would like to share that letter with the Department of Public Utilities with a petition to create the project. We couldn't create the project unless DPU gives us approval, so this is a multi-step process. If DPU gives us approval, then we would come back to the town and go through the regular municipal permitting process and make sure that everything's ticked and tied. So let me stop there and see if you have any questions.
Curious to know how long you got this battery storage. How much power can you store in those batteries, and how would it be used in the real world in an emergency, and how long would it last?
That's a great question. And we're in the, you know, this is the very early stages of designing the project. We have a consultant who's doing some work to analyze the batteries, or analyze the potential for battery there. So I can't tell you exactly how long it will last. I can say that there's a similar project that we have proposed in Yarmouth, where we were further along in the analysis, we've actually taken that one to DPU and proposed it. That battery would last about 12 hours. So, and that's fairly typical for this kind of battery. If you look back up on Slide 3, that picture, that white box, is what the battery looks like, it's a fully self-enclosed container. So it's a, what we're thinking is that it would be likely a lithium-ion battery, we're not necessarily committed to that, but that is, you know, the kind of typical type of battery. And so 12 hours is probably what we could expect. So it would offset the use of the generator at the facility. It wouldn't necessarily replace it, you know, completely, but it would offset it. And then the battery could be recharged from the solar, so depending on the weather, you know, that battery would recharge and be able to be used again.
So, and if you have three of those batteries, that would be 36 hours?
I, you know, I'm not sure, I don't want to say that. 12 hours is what we found in Yarmouth, but we just haven't done the analysis for Hadley yet, so I can't speak tonight.
Can I just ask about, so the environmental justice communities in Hadley? So it looks like Hadley, you know, compared to surrounding towns are hitting kind of the, I want to refer to it as maybe the lowest qualifying level, that yellow?
Oh, I wouldn't say that. I think that, so you're probably looking at the slide 10-
Yeah.
-which has the map. And these are just different designations, they're all considered environmental justice communities. Those are designated by the state, this map is pulled up from the state environmental justice map, so they all equally qualify.
Okay, so for that particular population, which is focused on median household income, just like, so how do you ensure that the individuals in those communities benefit? So is it like a credit on the supply side and on the-
That's a great question, and it's something that we would need to work out. And so, we're proposing in concept that the credits would go to that community, but exactly which customers in that community, or all of the customers in that community, and exactly how that works is something we'd actually like community feedback on. So what we propose to do is, if the DPU approves the project, then we would come back to the community and ask for feedback through surveys, through public meetings, and, you know, hear what the community thinks. But one way that it could work is to provide bill credits for customers that are low-income or in the environmental justice areas. It could be a lump sum, say before the heating season, that's one of the ways that we've thought about it.
Does it have to be with people that have solar already?
No, no, definitely not. Because we wouldn't expect that, you know, all the customers in that area would have solar. Really what we're envisioning is this is providing the benefit of solar power to the people who need it most in the environmental justice communities, whether or not they have solar.
So where you're placing this solar is, where, who is it going to benefit?
So the solar power would be located at our facility-
Right.
And the power itself, if there's not a power outage, the power would be sold into the regional electric grid. And so it would, you know, provide that power to the grid, but the revenues from that power, then, you know, is a dollar amount that could be distributed to the community in Hadley. And that's exactly what we would need to work out, is exactly who and exactly how, but we'd want community feedback on.
So that would be EverSource companies, EverSource users?
EverSource customers.
So, we have a program where people have-
Nexium.
What'd you say?
Nexium.
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 Where people have gone to that system. So how does that affect that, or what would be offered to the customers?
If I could just jump in real quick. The deregulation was put in place many years ago that doesn't allow the utilities to generate, I shouldn't say that, to do all three areas of electricity. The generation, the transmission, and then the local distribution in the streets. That was put in many years ago. EverSource does not generate electricity anymore. We've sold off all of our assets that generated electricity. Think back to like the Mount Tom Col, the power plant.
Yeah.
EverSource has been out of there. This legislation allows the utilities to generate this type, because you're really becoming a generator at this point. Now, we are, this is, you know, we have it in a few of our other areas, and we do have solar in other areas. But Nexium is a separate entity. They're putting electricity back into the grid. Think of it going back into the system. We would be doing the same thing, putting it back into the system, or taking care of our facility. And generating, obviously generating for the battery. I don't know if I'm answering that correctly for you, but-
It would give people an option?
Really, so this is not about-
Down the road, I mean, I'm looking at, you know-
All we're doing is putting electricity back into the grid. That we're a supplier now of electricity. So, everybody has the ability to get that electricity. The benefit is, we're generating more electricity into the grid.
And where does the tax benefit to the town come?
There would be increased commercial tax base.
New growth. So we're doing new growth to our facility. The assessor would come out, and I know we don't have those answers right now, based on, you know, what the proposal is, but that would be back to your assessors. New growth.
And so, what you're hearing is because you can't go forward until you hear how this board feels about the project, and whether or not we would support this.
That's right. We don't want to propose the project unless you support it. You know, this is something that needs to be in partnership with the municipalities, that's something that we would want, and that's what's called for in the legislation. So, if you think that it's a good project, and we hope that you do, we would ask for a letter of support, and then we could move forward. As I said, I think we'd want to talk with the Planning Commission and the Conservation Commission, and we can move forward with DPU and kind of go, it's a multi-step process.
For citing it.
Yes.
For basically citing it in the end. This is just, this, we're different than another commercial business trying to come in. They wouldn't have to go to the DPU first. We have to get basically the blessing from the Department of Public Utilities from the town. So the town is sending a letter on our recommendation to the DPU, and then we fall back into the process of citing it with you at the local level.
And again, this is property that you already own.
Correct.
Sounds to me like this is one of those things that we should think about and vote at our next meeting.
How critical is it for you to?
What is your, or you have a timeline that's tight?
No, that would be fine. We would hope to submit this to the Department of Public Utilities before the end of the year, so I'm not sure how often you meet, but I think that would be fine.
Every two weeks?
Oh yeah, that would be fine. And if you have questions as you think about it, if you would like to come back and ask questions, we'd be absolutely glad to provide additional information.
We may have, we may have other residents who have comments that we would hear about it, and you always have a thought after the fact, is I forgot to ask that. So I think giving us to our next meeting would be great.
That would be fun.
And just so everybody knows, they would have to go for site plan review before the planning board-
Correct.
And deal with the Conservation Commission, because that property's in 100-year-putting.
Correct.
So it's not, if we were to give our blessing, it's just give them the opportunity to go to the state and get that approval, and then they have to come back and go through, jump through all the hoops that they, anybody-
We're just kicking, the Kickstarter.
Yeah, correct. That's a good way to, I like that. If you haven't heard that one, the Kickstarter.
All right, let's put this on the next meeting.
And if, Mike, just in preparation, can you send me a template of the letter of support?
Yes.
That would be helpful. Dan and Bill are both on, I don't know if you want to get any of their input or questions.
Anybody in the audience have a question? No. Thank you very much for coming and your presentation, and hopefully you'll join us in two weeks to answer the questions we figured.
Absolutely, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, excuse me, moving on to Valley Bike update. Carolyn?
Sure. I sent you all a train of emails of talking with Carolyn, who is now in charge of the Valley Bike. If you remember, we had two gentlemen who came before, was it late, early summer?
Right.
And so when I, in preparation of more discussion about it, and in preparation of what possible expenses outside of that pad was going to be, I did send that email to Carolyn to ask her for more, to answer some of the questions about costs, some more specifics. And as you can see in those correspondence and the MOU, there are some unknowns about additional expenses. I don't feel that we're, just in my perspective as a town administrator, putting it on the warrant right now, I am concerned that there's some unknown expenses that we don't know, that have not been finalized. As well as I did bring it up because it was going to be on the warrant with the Finance Committee who reviewed the warrant today and voted, they had, they also had concerns. There was no official vote, I just wanted to know what their feelings were, so I could share that with you. And there were concerns similar to what those questions were that I had had in the emails.
Well, and there were questions we had when Chris Curtis was here earlier in the summer, which was, we don't want to have to pick up any of the expenses because we don't have the money to do that, and maybe we could deal with administrative fees, but if nothing is set yet, we're, I don't think, I think you're right, we don't want to commit to doing anything unless there's a more firm plan.
The only thing I'm questioning is when, and I probably should have gone back and listened to the meeting. I thought, I think we have one of these classic order of things issues, so they don't, I remember the conversation is, they wanted to know that the town was willing to pay that administrative fee, that $4,000-
$750, if you don't-
Yeah, whatever, the number isn't here. That the town would be willing to find a path forward to pay that, as long as they could get the private sponsorship through, whether it was Whole Foods or whoever, to pick up the cost of the pad, if that's necessary, if the sidewalk was wide enough, like it says in here, maybe they don't have to. And that they were actively talking to them, but that if, at town meeting, if we wanted to bring this to town meeting, we could write the warrant in such a way that it was contingent upon all of that happening, otherwise we wouldn't move forward.
So what happened, because I also spoke with Carolyn-
Carolyn Mish, sure.
Carolyn Mish.
Yeah, sorry, I meant to say Mish.
Chris Curtis has left Valley Bike. And when he left, everything just dropped. And she, when I spoke to her last week, was on the job the first day.
Yeah.
So, she's not been actively pursuing what's going on, because she just started, so-
So maybe we defer it to annual town meeting then, to give Carolyn Mish time to-
I think that makes sense.
I agree with that.
I want more information too, I don't think we can afford any added-
Even for this type of luxury.
There's no location that's been totally identified or confirmed, and that's my biggest concern, is to be working on a private, to be paying for something on a private, the easement, it's going to cost us more legal fees than the pad's going to cost.
I'll make a motion to take it off the fall town meeting.
It's actually not on, we never put it on, so I just wanted to get your agreement that stays on.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think you need to vote.
I mean, I don't want to drop the discussion, I do think it's important, and there is a lot of public support for it.
Bring it up again, and they bring more information.
But we need more information before we can make a decision.
Yeah, and I also think we need a lot of information to go to town meeting with it. Trying to sell it contingent upon is going to be very difficult, in my opinion. So, and even though they only want $4,800 a year, right now, that's a lot of money for us. We're going to get a very big shock once we see the town meeting warrant as to what we need to purchase for the town to survive another however many years, so I just think it's not a great idea right now.
Are you with me?
Thank you.
All right. DPW building feasibility study.
So we had left it as if you had any suggestions or had anybody that was interested to let me know, I did do some poking around. I have a few names that I wouldn't recommend because I haven't reached out to them, but if you're comfortable with me, with some of the names that have been given to me, I can make those calls. But if you have anybody in particular, please let me know, that would be great.
Wally Psychowski reached out to me.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the name.
Wally Psychowski.
Oh, good. Make it a winter time job.
He seemed pretty interested in it, so.
Because what we have now is Scott, Gary, Tommy, someone from Finance, and someone from Capital. I know from Finance, I think it's Andy will be.
So-
So we need Capital.
That sounds like almost a full compliment.
That is you, okay, so I didn't know if he had talked, okay.
Yeah, I'm in.
And Randy?
So that sounds like a pretty full compliment right there.
No, we need one more, I need an odd, I need two residents.
Yeah, we want a resident.
You got Wally and one other you need?
One other resident.
And we can, you know, you can just shoot me some suggestions, or give me a call if you've got some names. So I don't want to catch anybody off guard who hasn't shown interest.
And typically, wouldn't, usually we ask the individual to just send an email to Jennifer, just saying, "I'm interested in being on the committee," so we have something in writing.
Okay, I'll tell him that.
Jane, you have the liaison to the-
Want me to reach out to him, or you want to?
DPW, right?
I'd have to get his contact information, if you have it, if it's easier, yeah, that'd be great.
Do you think I should be?
What's that?
Usually the liaison is on-
Liaison to DPW should be on the committee? As a Select Board member, or as a town person?
Well, Select Board member, or you could be an alternate with Randy, just so.
Yeah, it's really your-
I mean, it's your call, but normally.
I'll ponder it.
My new favorite word, and it might have come from Michael Singh, but marinate on that for a while. My new favorite word.
Maybe when I did the school one.
Yeah, but like I was on the library building committee, but I wasn't the liaison to the library.
Oh, okay, I thought you were.
And then Christian wasn't the liaison to the council.
Just a question of whether the liaison wants to be on or not.
Yeah, that's fine. If you have enough on your plate, that's okay too.
I was just going to say, yeah.
I did speak with Mike Richards, who's the engineer who came and gave the presentation. He has five sites, and he's going to hold off until that committee gets, so that they can take a look at those five sites. And get the whole introduction, so.
Okay. All right, so we're leaving this to Carolyn, basically.
I don't think we need a motion or anything, right? We're just agreeing to delegate the authority of Carol?
Yep, that's great.
Agreed. All right, Alex. Hadley Public Media access.
Oh, he's got a big pad, look out. Yep. It's empty right now, though.
Do you want me to turn the camera so it's on you?
Or you can press 2, and you will see me.
She gets the fun job.
Yeah.
Pushing the buttons.
1 is the Select Board, 2 is me. Actually, 2 is Carolyn right now. Yeah, but you can turn that camera to me, and then-
It's exciting.
Hold on, we might need, do you know how to zoom out?
Oh no, I'm going to do super.
Yep, yep, there you go.
Nice.
Do you want me to be my production assistant?
Sure. Part-time Select Board, part-time-
All right, all right. So, I believe last time we left off, the Select Board was going to come up with some goals for the Highland Media Department. for the High Line Media Department.
I wasn't here, so I'm oblivious.
Yes, you were.
Huh?
I just know that we wanted to make sure that we, we were going to talk about how many channels we had.
We have two.
No, that was a, no, that was.
That was earlier?
That's, I don't want to talk about that right now. I don't think that's an immediate concern right now, but it's something that could be talked about in the future.
So Alex, my only problem is, is on the agenda, it is talking about that channel.
Oh, it is.
Didn't have goals down. So I have to be more, I have to, when I'm, we put the agenda together based on, because we had talked about the channels, but we were going to discuss it.
Okay.
So do you have any information on the channel? Remember, there was three channels and you wanted to.
We do have three channels. We used to, um, just a question for select board. Do you, in my personal opinion, we don't have enough content for, to justify three channels at the moment. Would the select board be open to having one channel instead of two channels?
Well, we don't want to give up a channel. We may not use it right now.
Right. No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
That's what you mean, right? You would only be focused on.
One channel.
Exactly.
Programming content for one channel.
Hmm. Or what I've been doing lately, all the government stuff I've been doing on 192, and then I've been broadcasting on 191.
Right. Well, I think that's something we did talk about last time, about a reformation of the Advisory Committee that would help with that input regarding programming and content. But I mean, certainly at this point, I mean, I would think whatever you can handle, you know, and if your opinion is that the highest and best use for you is focusing on the one channel, I'm not opposed to it unless you came to us and said, well, I'm going to drop all of this other, you know, so I think we'd have to know more about what that looked like.
Right. I mean, I don't have an exact plan because I've been doing ten jobs all at once, so.
You've been putting a tremendous amount of stuff on YouTube.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Way more than it has ever been, and it looks great.
Thank you.
Yeah, nothing but positive feedback from the community.
I mean, some people have gone to me with their concerns, but I do my best to make sure their concerns are heard and I get, try to get it fixed, so.
What kind of concerns are you hearing?
Um, I think at one point, select board was not on, was not broadcasting live and it wasn't reruns. So I made sure there was reruns of that.
They're like lassie, good rerun.
Yeah. And then there's like a couple of them that can't figure the top of my head, but it's nothing too, too major, nothing I can't handle. So, but otherwise, I've been hearing a lot of, a lot of good feedback from it, so.
And I do recall the last meeting and I, and I think that that was the intent, that you were looking for some feedback regarding goals. Because I remember I said a couple of things off the cuff and then you wanted us to go back, spend some think time.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm warning if it has to be in select board meeting or they could just email me.
It can, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't have to.
Just don't reply to all.
Yeah.
And is this the time we should start putting on the agenda about needing a committee for the?
Yeah, I was going to talk about the Town Administrator's Report because I'm just not getting a response for either, so.
Are you, are you seeing any voids that you would like to fill with something that we were typically, were not doing right now? Stuff that was in other communities that worked, any kind of that?
Nothing that I can think of at the moment. I mean, obviously, the more we, I get things a little more established, I get assistant in, the more I'll see probably. So, and in fact, I'm going to go to a couple of career fairs and try to get some resumes from area colleges, so.
All right, good.
Yeah, and that's kind of it.
Any other questions for Alex?
Doing a great job.
Thank you.
For all your doing.
You're welcome. Glad to be here.
Everybody enjoys it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other items not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance? Town Administrators Report.
All right, as I said, actually before we started the meeting, I mentioned that it's, the town hall was bustling today. And so we had Joan working on workman's comp audit. Powers and Sullivan was here with the, the accountant was here as well, reviewing the FY22 annual audit. So Linda was very busy and trying to find space. So we've continued to clean out that meeting room so that, because our town, our town council will be coming on a regular basis to do office hours. Lori, our accountant, also needs a place to stay, but it was really starting to get cluttered. And so I actually had Lori and Linda in their office, which I will never do again, two money people together. But, so it was really busy. The Finance Committee did meet tonight, right before this meeting, and they did approve everything that's on the warrant. Capital Committee has reviewed and approved all of the requests. The warrant is being reviewed by legal. They have the motions now and are, will be replying to those, but it looks good. They've responded quickly. That's been wonderful. Like within two days, I'm getting responses back from them. So on the nineteenth, the select board will make their recommendations for each article, you know, so we have it under the motions, how you guys voted. I am going to be posting on the thirteenth, so I do need to have you just sign that I can come in and sign the warrant so we can post it. You'll still be voting on each article, so the town knows how you guys have voted on it. So just a, just a nudge that I'll need you in before the thirteenth. But I'll, I'll send you out an email when I've got the final copy for you.
So we're meeting on the nineteenth and we'll be voting that night. And then we have the forms on the twentieth, sorry.
That was my question. Remember, we were talking about the, whether we want to do it on.
Do we want to have two meetings or do we want to combine those two?
You've got Board of Health also.
Board of Health.
The nineteenth.
Yeah, so we could, we could still do the public forum on the twentieth.
Okay.
Do we have a lot on the nineteenth?
I have to look. It's on my whiteboard in my office.
The solar.
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 Don't want to take long.
Three years, one year.
I would hope that if we're doing interviews for the Board of Health, that we don't have too much on that.
Board of Health, Schmura Road, sign policy are the things that are on right now.
What policy?
A sign policy about where signage is placed on town property, I believe. This is a carryover.
It's like been a carryover for a couple of meetings, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm playing catch-up. I just carried it over.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't look, looking at the proposed agenda in drafts, which is very nice to have, thank you. There's not that much so far. It's two weeks away.
How many articles on the warrant?
Uh, ten.
That shouldn't take that long to go through.
And the form would be here, correct?
Yeah.
We would also do it remote too. We would do a hybrid as well.
The only thing, the only thing I would see would be the problem is typically the PowerPoint presentation has your recommendations in it. I could plug them in as we move through the meeting and have them ready. If you've started, if you did your meeting at 5:30, ran through the agenda, made your recommendations, I could literally plug them in and then you could do the form at 7:00 PM if you wanted to do it all in one night. But if you wanted to do it two nights, I mean, that, that would be completely, that would work too. But if you want to do just one night, I can.
I don't care.
I can make it work.
I like our night.
There's thirteen articles, but honestly, two of them are pretty much housekeeping from old warrant articles. I think the one that's probably going to have the most discussion, I'm guessing is possibly, you know, Capital, although it's all borrowing within the levy. The resolution would probably have the most discussion, possibly. I don't know.
So is it possible for us to get draft copies of the warrant?
So I would love to give you the final draft and I'll probably have that tomorrow. Absolutely, I can get that to you. Yep.
I'm fine either way. It doesn't really matter to me. I mean, sometimes we try to cram things into one meeting.
What day are we on here?
Today, we're the fifth.
I know, but I mean, when, when do you want the?
Either the nineteenth or the twentieth, because town meeting is the twenty-seventh.
Correct.
Well, the nineteenth is for the, the select board meeting, but whether we add the public forum to that.
Or do it the next day.
Or do it just separately the next day.
Yeah, my only concern with pushing them together, and this comes back, I had a, got a question about executive session too, about the ordering of things. It's just, if it's a public forum, obviously you want to start on time, you know, and and if we're trying to have our select board meeting, so we start at six, can we reasonably get through everything in the hour? Or then we'd have to cut, if we're not done with everything, go to the public forum and then go back to the select board meeting. It can just get a little messy. I kind of like it when it's just clean. Everybody knows the start time and we're done.
So that sounds like you're in favor of a two-evening event and I'm fine with that, Molly. I agree with what you're saying.
It's cleaner because if we do have a discussion that carries on.
Right.
I don't care.
If you're worried about, I mean, another option, if you're worried about it two nights in a row, do you want to meet next week? The select board meeting.
Do what next week?
And then public forum the next week. Just another thought.
Can Board of Health make next week?
That's already posted for the nineteenth.
Right, and you already have, we've already changed the candidates several times.
I don't think two nights in a row is a big deal.
No, I've done it before.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a flyer for you.
All right, I'll move on. The Russell School Survey will be included in the November tax, November first tax bills with a link in a QR code and hard copies are going to be available at the library and the town hall and the senior center. I did get some advice from other town employees that in the, historically, you had given the town administrator, you had given David Nixon permission to make some, to screen out whether what's appropriate to go into tax bill or not. So I did take that assumption that you would, you would agree with that, that the survey was okay to go out there, to go out in tax bills. Good? Okay. Also, Molly had mentioned at the climate forum that there was a question about the dike and ironically, yesterday I got an update from our engineers. Who would have thought? So I thought I would publicly let you guys know what was going on with the dike as, as part of the Town Administrator's Report. So the work is continuing to develop conceptual remedial approaches and costs to address seepage instability for the current levy and the rail trail berm embankments. Work began to evaluate the floodplain impacts associated with the conceptual levy proposed along Bay Road. This involved coordination with FEMA to obtain and review the latest draft flood model for the Connecticut River. This also included a review of the UMass Amherst Study for future river flows due to climate impacts. Woodard and Curran, who is our engineers, Rich Niles is our lead engineer on this project, participated in a meeting with the town on August fifteenth, 2022, to discuss the status of the project. Woodard and Curran coordinated with the town and ACOE to secure funding for planning efforts related to flood risk communications through their Silver Jackets Program. And I'm sorry, I did not write the acronym down for that. But this is, this is a free program. We wrote a grant for it. And it's, so it will help, it will just give us more educational aspects of it. It's going to be educating people about floods, about future planning, things like that. So there's no cost to the town, no.
And one of the, you said ACOE, so I'm assuming that's the Army Corps of Engineers?
Yes, thank you.
And what's their role?
So they have a sub, they have a sub-entity called the Silver Jackets Program. And it's just like, they put it in, with a FEMA response, you have Blue Jackets responding, police, you have Red Jackets, fire. This is called the Silver Jackets. It's educational. It's an educational aspect, aspect of when you have a flood-prone area in your community.
Okay, so they still don't actually do, but they educate.
They still do, will not, do not have any jurisdiction over Hadley's levy.
Amazing. They're guilty, but they don't want it.
And work is continuing to prepare the operation and maintenance plan, which we will, which I, works pretty frequently with Rich on as I learned, as I prepared the budget. Last year, we had about sixteen thousand dollars. I kind of put the lowest level. So we have different levels of maintenance. So each year, I'm going to try to add one level on to it each year. So that's where we are right now. So I know you've, you've heard me talking about my desire to have an updated classification study and since, most importantly, a succession plan as well. And I became aware of the Community Compact Grant was funding classification studies. So I just went to Jen Travato, our HR manager, and said, hey, could you look into this? And we thought we were just, you know, sending an email, say, yeah, we're interested. And like, what was it, two weeks later, we got twenty thousand dollars through the classification plan. Normally, I would update with you, but this was really just like, hey, let's see what happens. And then ten thousand dollars for a succession plan. This is so important for our non-union personnel. I cannot tell you how important this is. And it's going to really put us in a good place to make sure we, we know that we're appropriately paying for our non-union personnel, so.
So in the past, we have had studies and they have been done and I don't know how, because I was not on the board at that time. I only listened to the studies. The studies were done. I don't know how the person was chosen who did the studies. How will that happen?
So we will follow, because of that price, we will follow getting some three quotes, but I'm really familiar with this and I am familiar with a lot of the companies that do it. And I know one in particular that's very good. So I will get, I will reach out to all three of them and Jennifer and I can do a conference call with the three of them. But I, the key here is, is that we, we follow through with it. That's the key. And that's going to be my goal, is that we follow through with it and make sure that there's funding to support the non-union staff.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so that was a great, that was a great surprise. And then just to let you know, I am having trouble. I did reach out to the Charter Review Committee that was in place and I'm not getting a full response of people that are still interested. So I, I just want to put that plea out. We'll probably have to put something on the website that we are, because we're very behind in that charter review. Alex is aware of that as well. So I think we're going to have to, you're okay with that? I need to read, we need more members. I only had maybe two reply that they were still interested.
And when is that contract done? Is it twenty-three or twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Right, Alex? I think.
It's a long.
We just got to get that, we have to get that outreach done. Yeah, it's the outreach and the survey that's really.
To be clear, it's Charter Spectrum.
Yes, I'm, thank you.
No, I'm just saying, when you hear Charter, I didn't want somebody thinking we're talking about like the town charter. This is like the biggest complaint in town.
Yes.
Which is the Internet service.
And I know Alex has some good ideas, so it'll, and he's really going to help lead that, right, Alex? Thank you. Okay. So that's, that's all I have. I think that's it.
All right, do we have any select board, oh, items for future discussion?
I have one. Actually, on the, it'll be before our next meeting. So on the seventeenth, the Planning Board is having a Zoom meeting on the results of the housing. So that's at 6:30 on October seventeenth.
And it's virtual.
It's virtual.
Yeah, so that's the Housing Production Plan results.
So people are interested in how those surveys went. So we have trunk or treat. That'll be after our next meeting too. But we're doing trunk or treat on October twenty-eighth, bearing good weather.
Thank you. What hours are that?
Five to seven.
Five to seven. If you would like to participate and decorate your vehicle and be there, just drop them a line and they supply the candy. So you just have to decorate your vehicle and they will.
Records@hadleema.gov.
Yeah. Okay, this was actually, are there things that we want to put on future agendas, not announcements?
Yeah, I've got one.
Yes.
So when, I think back and I want to say maybe June, we started talking about priorities. I think we talked about communication, improving communication, just kind of as a broad topic. Yeah, this broad topic being something. But I would love to, again, try to figure out how do we get to a little bit bigger picture? I would love to talk about doing more informational forums for the community itself so that when issues of great significance, like, you know, the status of the dike, I mean, I'd like, just the capital budget, I mean, we'll sit there at special town meeting and people will vote on all of these line items. And yet there are some pretty significant capital outlays that are out there that are going to come at us. So trying to figure out how we get that information out. So I would just love to put that on as an agenda so we can maybe brainstorm on how to do some of that planning here to position ourselves to do it. to do it for the community.
Well, that would be, I would think that that would be the Capital Planning Committee, um, having, because you set up with all the departments on their five-year plan, or whatever they might need for the future, so you do now and future requests, so there's already something there between DPW, school, uh, fire, police, they should all have a capital plan, um, already working on it in progress.
So I, I can address that?
I think what Molly is saying is, we need to get that plan out so that the residents in general hear about it, instead of waiting until meetings show up.
Well, and, and a capital, capital plan, just like your budgets, should exist to support the strategic plan, so the strategic plan for the town is more than just capital. I mean, it involves zoning, you know, planning board issues, staffing.
But I think each, I think each department, I know where you want to go and have people be aware of all this going on, but if they would just tune into our Planning Board meetings, every week on the Planning Board there, they do, um, planning for future meetings and what they want on their meetings and stuff, I mean, they're very good about that, and the school department does too, so I'm not exactly sure, um.
Well, I'll give you an example.
How many, how many meetings do you want to have a year, for God's sake?
No, it's not, it's not about the number of meetings, but I'll give you an example, Joyce, you're affiliated with Cooley Dickinson Hospital.
Yeah.
Cooley Dickinson Hospital has a stra, strategic plan.
Yeah.
Right now, and they have four pillars that they're talking about, and they're making it clear to everybody where they're going to be spending their time and effort over the next few years, right? I think the town of Hadley, with the Select Board as its, as its leadership, we should be doing the same thing for the residents and business owners of the town.
So the long-range planning is basically what, what you're talking about, whether it be two pillars, four pillars, whatever it might be, you're still looking at a long-range plan that we have in effect already. We have a long-range planning committee, we already have a long-range.
Well, we have a ma, an updated master plan.
We do. I mean, so we go off of that, of what's already there, instead of being redundant and reworking it. Look at, look at the master plan and see what's going on with that. You, you're, you're reworking things, instead of just looking at what's already done.
No, I think we're, we're trying to find a way to communicate them, and, and the master plan is there, um, but like this Housing Production, uh, survey that we just completed.
Yeah.
That's going to inform the Planning Board in particular, what people are looking for.
Correct.
But then you have to put it into the context of, is that nice, and we're going to put it off on a shelf, or are we going to actually think it's important and we do something about it, and how would that translate to revenue? I mean, I think people are looking for a bigger picture, and every time we go to town meeting, it's important for people to vote in the context, not only if, what's put in front of them, but they want to know what's coming next, right? So I, I, again, and we don't want to have the discussion tonight, because it's not on the agenda, but I mean, I think we need to have this discussion to figure out how to move that ball forward.
So, so taken.
All right, let's put that on the agenda.
Somewhere, not next week, not the next meeting.
No.
We talked about, um, evaluation, and I think.
Yes, we still need to after.
And I, and I offered, I think you weren't here at that meeting, I offered for, instead of us doing an evaluation of Carolyn, that I think it would, because Molly and, um, Randy, you haven't really worked with Carolyn that long, you've worked with her for a few months now, but not over a period of time where I don't think that you actually would make a, do a good evaluation of her for what she actually does. I know you're, you're on top of things and you, you know, you're in there and you have conversations with her, but to me, it would be behooves to, uh, was suggested a 360, where people in Town Hall who work with her every day, um, do an initial evaluation and what their rapport is, and how they work with her, and how she works with them, um, doing something of that nature.
Hang on, timeout. You did, you did mention it last time, and I was like, yeah, I'm fine, I, I understand 360-degree evaluations, they've been around for, they were the big thing back in the 90s, everybody started doing them.
Yeah.
So I, I, the way I took that, um, wasn't that we were relinquishing.
Oh, no, no, no.
So I mean, Randy and I are still want to participate in an evaluation process. I mean, that's only appropriate.
I think.
But we want to get other input as well, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
And Carolyn would be doing a self-evaluation as part of 360.
That's what I was going to say, we need to hear from Carolyn, her list of things that she has done and accomplished, and things that she has on her wish list to get done.
Which card are you going to put first?
They tend to be done simultaneously, I, you know.
Going to have one big meeting and they're all going to come together.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something I'm sure Jen could provide us with guidance on, right? You could maybe propose a process to us, and then we can, yeah, yeah, but I mean, we are contractually obligated to. It's in her, it's her contract.
We have no contracts, but she does, um, you know, to do the evaluation, yeah. It's a yearly thing.
Yes, it's on her.
It's a yearly thing.
Right. That we signed.
Yeah.
All right, so that needs to continue.
All right, I have a different question, which is, the November set of meetings, I will not be here the third week in November, and that, or the second week in November.
Not going on a cruise, are you?
Yeah, I am.
Stay away from COVID.
Good for you. Stay away from where?
COVID.
I know, it's out.
Get it once you're done.
Yeah, right, till the next night.
That's my plan. So our first meeting is going to be on the second?
Yes.
And our third one was going to be the 16th.
Correct. So what if?
Your House for Thanksgiving?
Sounds good.
Meeting?
Sounds good. We're here.
Yeah, I'm not here on the 7th, that second week in November, I'm not here, and you're gone that week anyway.
I'm gone that week anyway.
Okay. So we do the?
The first, first, and probably you don't want to do it the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, but maybe we do.
The Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
Or what if we did it a different night?
Well, she's still not going to be here, she's gone the whole time.
I'll be, I'll be back.
Jennifer has a question.
I, I just, with respect, I would remind you that it's posted online that you meet on the first and the third Wednesdays of the month, and people sort of set their schedules to plan for that accordingly, and I'm not saying that obviously you don't have the right and ability to change your meetings as needed, but i, as we're getting ready and getting and moving into, um, license renewals and things like that, it would be beneficial to sort of.
Keep it moving.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, that y'all have, y'all don't always shift your meetings around like that, and I'm just, I'm putting it out there that this is what your schedule is, and this is what people have come to depend on. Scott plans his first or third Wednesday nights around you, so.
Thank you, Scott.
I, I would just, I would, I would suggest perhaps with lots of respect, that maybe you continue on, and if one member, even the chair is perhaps absent, the meeting can continue on, and if there's something that needs to be held for your conversation, and it could be, if that's okay.
Works for me. It's okay for me.
Yeah, we'll just try to have a little bit lighter agenda that night, right?
And we may want to change the 21st to the 28th.
We try to keep them light.
The 21st.
First is December, just because it's so close to Christmas, if we did the 28th the last week.
Well, but that just, that flies in the face of what Jennifer just said, too.
Okay.
Just keep going.
We'll just keep going, and.
On the same schedule and.
And if it turns out that we aren't going to have a quorum, or we aren't able to go, then the meeting gets.
Yeah, we've, we've done that before, too.
Okay, so we'll stay first and third.
How will we? All right, what else? I've got some condolences.
Okay.
Wasn't here the last meeting, so we have a few. We have condolences for the family of Peter Yaski. We have condolences from the Select Board from, to the family of Frank Drozdle. Condolences to John, uh, family of Donald Witkowski. Family condolences to Justina Kozowski. Family of condolences to Jean Anne Lunt. Condolences to the family of Michael Ryan, and I don't know if anybody mentioned the last time, but condolences to the family and friends of Christine Jones.
I would like to add that there'll be a servants of, service of remembrance for Jean Baxter Saturday at 11:00 at First Church.
Okay.
Could you read this, because I'm coughing too much?
The Amherst College Board of Trustees requests the honor of your presence at the inauguration of Michael A. Elliott, class of 92, 20th president of Amherst College, October, Friday, October 28th, 2022, 4:00 PM, Amherst College, Main Quad. Join us for a community reception on the Main Quad immediately following the installation ceremony. Request by, uh, to respond by October 14th.
Is that for everybody?
Is there anyone here who could go? I can't go, that's the night of the Friends wine tasting here.
Oh, but that, I, I thought you were putting that out to the community, so that's.
We're looking for a board member.
Just a Select Board representative, please. Jane click, oh, so she thought she would open it up to y'all, all, to see who could go.
Not I.
Not I.
What time?
4:00 PM.
Dad gum it, I guess I can go.
Yours.
Are you going to RSVP for yourself?
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Thank you, Molly.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think this is the first time I remember being, I don't remember when Biddy Martin came in, if we got invited, so that's kind of nice that they're including us, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Randy, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
See you in two weeks.